Okay. Okay, seven o'clock, ladies and gentlemen.
I'd like to debate it by the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, one area, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, hold on, please.
Baxter, Jim Jack, Confin, Moody, T. Kim, Warren Geller.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, we have the consent agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to extradite individuals by bringing non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission podium without discussion. Any member of the commission, staff, or the public may ask that any item or item on the consent agenda be removed and placed as last item under new business to receive full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. The items on the consent agenda are A, approve the June twenty, twenty twenty-three special meeting minutes as presented. Approve the June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes as presented. Approve the resolution as presented from the baseball golf field of Boeing. Doing business as a waterfront field of dreams for their charitable gaming license and authorize the city clerk treasurer to execute the necessary supporting carriers. And authorize the city manager to cast the city's votes are denominated six candidates, the Michigan commit fully worker, workers' compensation fund board of rest needs. Within the audience, if like any of those items moved under this commission, any questions? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I made a motion to have it approved as presented.
Is there a second? Or any discussion? Jessica, roll call, please.
Moody.
Hi.
T. Kim.
Hi.
Baxter.
Hi.
Jim Jack.
Hi.
Confin.
Hi.
Washington.
Thank you. Moving on, we have citizens' comments. This will be any member of the audience who would like to address the city commission on a topic that's not on the agenda. If so, please go to the podium. You have about five minutes. State your name and address if you would, please.
Thank you, Eric.
And Jessica will be keeping on.
My name is Dan Wolfwater, W O L C, O L P, T R. I live at six two five West Michigan Avenue. I'm here today along with my neighbor Georgia, only to express concerns with light and junk that exist along with the potential case safety hazards. At five one four West Michigan, I provided in the handout that each of you have the unique site of where that property is located. It's lot two and three on West Michigan, page one. Many of us in the neighborhood have attempted for many years to address this issue with the city administration and police. And unfortunately, we've been told there's really nothing we can do because of the existing ordinance. And the way this property is situated with no easement setbacks from the road. So I distributed the package of material that will give you a picture of the situation if you aren't familiar with the area. And a proposed solution, which is really just my gut feel that we might have to go with the rest of the proposed ordinance. Because the feedback that we're getting is this property complies within the ordinance. I know this issue probably isn't something that we can take up tonight. But I was suggested by Scott Peterson to start here with the commission. In addition to the light issue, we have a problem at the entrance to West Michigan and Boeing show they wrote. And if you turn to page three, two of the handout, the bottom left corner will show you the tall weeds that are growing at that intersection. And it makes it very difficult when you come out of that intersection with eastbound traffic coming on Boeing show or road. Along with that, where the bike trail comes right into West Michigan, very hazardous. Bikers are at risk, tires are at risk when you drive out into the road. So let me refer you to page two again and to go to the lower back end corner, which is where the neighbor at five one four. Would like to create a hazard, in our opinion, with trailers and even a basketball hoop that hangs over the road. This, this has been a serious problem, and I've talked to many neighbors that have expressed concerns. That, you know, they have a hard time passing each other when trucks and other characters are coming down the road at that. If y'all still with it, the upper right corner, you'll see the trailers and the basketball hoops that exist. In addition to the fact that because it's on private property, the little tree hangs halfway over the road. It is coming down and blocks the view of even the trailers and chap tools that are sitting out. I told you many questions or direction that, you know, you can give us from the commission. But, you know, point has been a great place, and I'm very proud to be part of this community. Unfortunately, we have to deal with and invite friends over. And we started out by coming down the road and seeing this kind of a situation. It's not a good representation of what I think point should be trying to present as a great community to live in. Thank you. If I have any questions for me, I'm happy.
I guess maybe for Scott, is there, is there any way the ordinance can be modified to address the concerns there?
Not that I can. Hey, I don't care. I've already bought a fine, have a discussion with city attorney, see if there's some way to address that. But I can see why how to address one to bigger situation without creating a lot of unintended comment.
Oh, Mark, well, Dan, the, uh, the bottom left picture.
Yes.
That, so that is another good property that you talk about. That was just additional also ran, right? That's, that's not on the subject's property.
That bottom left trailer is on the subject's property in a bus to road, yes.
But the bottom left is where.
Oh, bottom left, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is the corner section that exists that owned by more dangerous.
Well, plus part is going to be in the city, right? Shouldn't turn up a little bit. But the other question for you, Mike, would be, you know. I, before, to see if it came to, you know, the, the question was asked, you know, of me or whoever. I was driving down, but they had to go down, I was lending to a customer's place and, you know, that willow is hanging. Oh, you know, can we send, you know, have dogs send the guys over and trim that tree back? Is it, you know, for, if someone's driving a higher truck, mine sits, you know, fairly low. You know, it really is, you know, hanging over quite a bit of the road. That would be my question to them. I, I get it. There's plenty of places in town, and we've got to get better at cleaning up the corners. You know, where stuff is kind of sticking out in terms of stuff like that. I get that, too. I, I just think that we can address those two things. The blind aspect.
Scott. And, and to give one other major answer here, is most city roads have this setback of, what is it? Sixty-six feet from the center line. And here is a situation where, for whatever reason, when this property was taken to put the point show where it opened. There was no setback for the first three lots. And even became a problem, as this council probably recalls, when we put the city water, we had to go down the left side of the road, go across the road, and then down east. So why do we go down easement here? There is eminent domain that you can only use to take it. There is a way to adjust the road. Obviously, those are expensive, but why should us as neighbors have to have the risk? Because one of our neighbors wants to affect the road and make it a hazard and also unsightly. I didn't bring before the council ordinances because I'm, I'm a prepared banker, and I love small business, and I want to promote small business. But he's operating a business out of the house. And you can get an ordinance, and I looked at it like Troy's, and I'm happy to share Troy Michigan's ordinance on running a business out of the house. He would not comply.
Can you do something?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh, is there language in the International Property Maintenance Code that the previous commission passed in twenty twenty that would address some of the light issues?
Well, when you're talking about lighters, junk, and trash, that kind of thing, and there's stuff, there are a lot of risks. If you were talking to this individual, I'm sure he'd say, this is all my stuff, and this is things I use. So whether it's trash or anything that looks like that, like, um, the International Property Maintenance Code, when that is done, done with a policy directive. For, when the priority could be, uh, the lab analysis that are permanent health, safety, welfare issue. It wasn't really adopted to address these kinds of minor flight. It's sort of. Is, is anybody, I, I was going with John, you're referring to, is anybody, you can have a talk to him and address their concerns and see if he can.
Absolutely. There has been a set show people. I have not personally, but I know people that have gone there and addressed the subject move. And every time they address the subject move, he does something pretty validating. And like, put trailers, hook to the bail locks and do other things like put the batwalk up and hang over the road. So, yeah, we tried to say, you know, let's be good neighbors, have, have, have a nice property that's representative of what.
Okay. And, yeah, just to reiterate, there is, his property language right to the cement is what I, we understand. Therefore, he puts his trailers and stuff right to the cement. And he's legal, maybe, because this is private control of this. Snow piles. And then your, the snow piles can't pile because you need that shoulder. There is no shoulder because he puts his stuff right there. So I can sympathize if you've had this issue before. And the person who's not cooperating has been stated, I would love to have a solution. He's very cheap. Yes, in response to Mr. Lassier, the commissioner of cameras, quite insane. I went to the house and told the individual ass out of courtesy of D W and last turn. If he would just move your trailer bottom foot, so the ball would never move. He was less than quarter, quarter third, less than half. This guy, I have a question, Scott. You can be a authority to make someone cut your grass, but we can't do anything about this. Scoring trailer on your property, that has. So would the best route here be incentive the planning commission to look for solutions to this problem, where you're staying in this position? From your perspective. Right, as this is able to address on the property level, I don't think that is, I don't think at all. I think the bigger problem location on the level. So Scott, I don't understand. This is, you know, even on this plaque shows standard. My next thing, six forty is. Well, the road is located in the north side of that right way. So it's, well, right up against that flat right way. It's not in the road. About sixty-two is booked in. So that was going to be my question.
Yeah, what would, uh, so you're wondering now, Scott, does it sound like there's many solutions that are within the legal bounds for the city to take? What would be the process of that, that may per se be concerns and concerns of D W?
I would refer that in this. The city attorney?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I don't know. Do you think we should move forward despite making the janitor at the next meeting? And then have a more material touch with the city attorney here and you can direct us and what options might be able to create a stop the problem?
It's not. And by sending this material to the city attorney, having review of it, having a discussion with Scott. And when he's ready to, you know, that he can, the next meeting after that, bring it back to the commission. I mean, that's fine.
I would support that, you know, that is important as well. That's all I can say. Is enough, right?
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks, man. They, well, we still look at, we'll look into addressing them. We'll agree then.
A little tree over the road we can address as a, yes, and a little, a little look at the tall grass. That's not a.
There's several spots like that, actually, even on sidewalks, there's ones that are in different locations where literally full sidewalks, they don't provide a bush. So anyone who lies in that sidewalk has to leave the sidewalk, go into the road, go right away, go back on the sidewalk because of a bush, so. If anybody sees an area like that, they need to be aggressive. They'd let Scott and myself know that a check in. I mean, I try to identify people like that. If I see hiding grasses, I would, I would try to let Scott, those are letters on it.
Great. Thanks for bringing that much attention. Yep. Sure. Did you, did you, did you name all your?
Jordan Kellwiers, six, seven, once we've been and, uh, and with the hand here, support to all the neighbors, smaller concern. And all people, West Michigan, on the beach, probably at twenty-five, maybe thirty people, which we, because we have the city that I. One of you people gonna do something, walk the money property. There's people over the be, trying to get around and materials, frankly, consistently. What's right on the edge, sometimes four inches in. I've seen this truck parked over there. And about one thing, I think one kind of really put the squeeze on things is when he had his trailer on one side. And another ten that has trailer on the other side. Trailer, and then change his trailer to his mail box by where the trailer did not have a license on it. And so it's just squeezing people. And like Dan says, we have a lot of people coming up here, someone vacationers, kids riding bicycles. And that's the path where the people come down the road, these are well, wear all bikers. And it's just squeezing. It's making a very, very unsafe condition. And I don't want the city to get into a situation that somebody had to move over. And they got into a race, and I, and then I'll say, well, we have some destruction on this side. Um, I, I guess we have to, but I really would like to say something happened. Woman that handle me, and I know that wouldn't get a cheap situation with this and that. I think probably cheaper than having a lawsuit, somebody who's going to. You're maintaining what.
Thank you. Mike, give me.
Uh, with regards to Mr. Elway or not.
It has part of each of us, and the people probably follow, you know. Because all of a sudden that lane, they just keep going out farther and farther and farther. And it makes it more difficult for people to try and get back out of that Michigan.
I'd say this, when Mr. Elway mentioned that there's vehicles parked on both sides of the road, a line, five fourteen, team property. And the other ones, uh, in the right, 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 the south side of the road. And it does narrow down the path for us that. There's an easy solution for that. We could create a traffic control order and make that section of road, no parking on that one side that the city controls on the south side. So that would alleviate at least half of the problem. It doesn't do anything in comparison to on the property here, but if that is a. We could do, and either to be considering later today, another traffic controller, temporary, put up, um, basically between the other. The other side of the street there and just try it out for ninety days and see how it can, that holds it on. That is something we could try with the.
Yeah. Oh, I like, that would be fine, Mike, but at some point in time, I guess, I guess I'll talk to you later about this, Scott. Well, I don't want to delay the meeting, but at some point in time, the sixty-six feet has to end up somewhere. So it starts, it is fine, then the, the road right way is not where it is on the south. So, you know, it, it shipped it over, so that'd be an easy answer for no parking on that side. And or, you know, uh, move that lane over. But the other thing is, I, I think then that dog had looked into at least for this winter. Putting a little bit more solid of all on each end of the subject property. So there you go. There's your, there's your orange markers preliminarily put for snow removal in winter. So to Mr. Elway's comment that, that it doesn't keep shipping over. Now they got their sight line, you know, the law knows where they can go and where they should. And, uh, at that point in time, if you throw something in the road, that, you know, that could be dealing with, you know, kind of taking care of it. So, but I think we should look into doing that sooner rather than later. And, uh, you know, driving some gas bike with four stops on it or whatever, then there you go. Gas play with four stops on it or whatever. Then there you go. There's there's the sideline. Make sure that's put on the safe property and that's to which is inside a tarmac and it isn't like this.
Okay. Do you have any clear directions, staff?
I have four.
Okay. Anyone else to use comments on the knowledge that I have? Moving on then. We have correspondence. Uh, there are two items. Correspondence. One is consumers' energy public notice and charter communications upcoming changes. Anything else to add? Yeah, just. Okay. Moving on to Susan or Susan to the manager, unfortunately.
Uh, what is for you? Uh. Actually, we did come up with two of those city signature events, the fourth of July, the main service could have placed last week. Bringing thousands, not hundreds of thousands of people to our community. Uh, over that one uh pretty well, no major problems. Their teams will be holding recap meetings in the coming weeks to continue to improve their programs in the years ahead. Uh, I'd like to congratulate and thanks all of those, whether they be volunteers, city personnel, or basically every department of the city. Or our contractors like are cleaning through this here today. Uh, they put in lots of extra effort to make sure that those ask off as well as they do. Uh, the fire department president, who do uh very important for this year and held a very successful pancake breakfast fundraiser last Saturday morning. Sort of the hundreds of hungry people. Unfortunately, during the event, one of the rear open indoors turkeys brands mounted pull loose from the building and the door was being closed. And then being both the door and the building. I'm not only sure and we'll work with our building architect and other city attorney. The proper repair this door and to check out our other mess. Trying to avoid this happening again. The two exterior uh restrooms on the east side of the pavilion are closed while repairs are being made to the sewer line. East of the building and services done. The other three restrooms in the pavilion are fully operational. But we hope to have those two uh restrooms back in service in the project to block any improvement for our traffic. Uh, we had a couple of issues with the splash catch thing. We're shut down for a couple hours this morning while repairs were made to as many hot races about. It was stuck in the on uh position of keeping water running, not shutting down our bank that it's supposed to do. It was fixed and returned to service the day after. Then around three o'clock this afternoon, uh, we were advised that uh the water rushing out at the uh. Feed to the splash pad, the PVC pipe that uh a boxer basically joins up with the back over better rope and that location. Uh. And uh. So we're working to see about getting that fixed and hopefully we'll have it operationally again. Uh, the new shelter that's being constructed at Nuss Beach Park by the uh Wayne City Rory Club is wishing for their contractor to arrive with the necessary pancake forms. To finish the foundation and move on. Uh, the road re-keeping up the price as they're making their drivers stay at those, stay no longer than anticipated. Al Craylon has been appointed to build the recently vacated position in the housing, on the housing commission. Uh, they reported on at the last meeting. Uh, she is a resident of the Caplex and this position did require a given rest. At the facilities. Our on game and remarking project is going to begin on Sunday. Uh, and that work will be uh the smaller items like crosswalks and the parking line. Centerline and head markings are anticipated to begin and we're currently agreeing that it's either be Tuesday or Wednesday of this. All this thinking work is weather related. Uh, the city's auditors will begin our annual audit the week of the July forty. We anticipate that the uh that consideration of open space improvement will come before the city commission at our next meeting on July the. Uh, partner ratio commission is having a meeting uh this Thursday this week to consider the manner and make recommendations in your mission. Uh, we're working at post our Zoom broadcast directly to Facebook. Uh, like we currently have done for YouTube, uh, work through the processes on that. And ultimately they have replaced the camera and instruments for us uh for several months now. Uh, we're hoping to have a Zoom and out connection that will move the public's ability to see and hear what's going on. During our meetings over those formats. Uh, we hope that it will transition into this by our December twelfth city commission meeting in that sooner. Okay, any questions on these or other items? I'd be glad to try to address.
Thank you. Would you use any questions tonight?
Good. Uh, just one on the uh, on the fire department doors. So their check and all of this is, they are remaining what nine springs or whatever.
Yes, we're gonna check all of them. Make sure it just doesn't keep repeating this call.
And I guess it'll be the first time I can say this, that well, we're good though. We still got some money left building also. It's my support.
Yeah, exactly.
Wait, that's right.
Right.
Any other vision? Okay. Moving on. We have uh reported the board and spending many agenda packets. There was the economic development corporation regular meeting minutes of June fifth. The local development finance authority regular meeting minutes of June fifth. The mainstream board regular meeting minutes of June sixth. The parts of recognition regular meeting minutes of June eighth. The planning commission regular meeting minutes of June nineteen. And the airport advisory board regular meeting minutes of June twenty second. Any question on? And then this in our package on all things conversion permission. It's a very busy month for energy. Moving on, uh, we have old business. Item A is city manager evaluation update. And we have, uh, which was included in the agenda packet of public comment representing a summary of the uh. City managers of valuation compiled uh by uh the commission. And I would just like to read that. Uh, and if there's any questions after me, we can, um, deal with that. The Wayne City City Commission recently completed its valuation of city manager Michael Kane for the period of December twentieth, excuse me, December twenty twenty one through December twenty twenty two. Overall, the commission rated Kane's performance as satisfactory standard with three point one three points on a five point rating scale. Kane's evaluation was held in closed session as allowed under Michigan's open meeting ad. The city commission evaluated the city manager in six areas. Commissionary relations, which was two point nine seven. Community public relations, which was three point four nine. General administrative skills, which was two point eight six. Business and fiscal management was three point two eight. Special projects, commission and boards was three point two one. And professional and personal development is three point three. Kane and the city commission agreed several goals for the coming year and will hold quarterly meetings to review progress. Those goals include city personnel, update employee handbook, update all city job descriptions, conduct formal annual evaluations. For department heads and assist department heads with the valuation of their employees. Community engagement, evaluate, analyze, review the city of Wayne City website with the goal of creating. A more effective tool for communicating with the community. Evaluate, analyze, review the city Wayne City's social media presence on all platforms. And the city's biannual newsletter with the goal of making these tools more effective and communicating with our community. Plan and rolling report. Implement an effective method to report daily, weekly cities that would enhance the city commission's ongoing knowledge of city habits. Included would be a calendar of recurring monthly tasks to set up a citizen staff and preparing for events, including monthly action on. Kane has served as Wayne City's city manager for twenty years. His current salary is a hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred and twenty seven dollars. And then at the end of uh, we've finished saving on city managers' evaluation. So we've opened it up for the public. If you have any comment or questions. Okay, commission, is there any? Any on all? Or any on all? The, no, sir. Under. Okay, moving on. Old business item B, high wire corridor equipment sync reading. Consider the recommendations from city manager Michael Kane to link with the posted amendment to chapter fifty four of the Wayne City Code of Ordinances. To enact article four, section five, four dash eight, two. One and five and create the requested high wire corridor. Mike?
As a city commission, uh, what we called earlier this year to receive correspondence on a verbal presentation from Ben Van Van Dam of Van Dam's Pesta Boaters and the Boy Moa area. On Division Street requesting support in their efforts to create a high wire corridor. It was presented that such a corridor would provide for improved and safer transport. From their facilities on Division Street along a portion of Pleasant Street to the whole launch at the Harvard Arena on Front Street. Uh, in the commission's pack and I can put it up here shortly is a map showing the borough's road. And the draft ordinance has been prepared for the commission to review consideration and possible second reading and adoption today. It is uh staff's understanding that the city commission's desire, considered as a matter further. Based on the successful experiences that the Rand Iron was having creating a similar high wire corridor and supporting ordinances. Establishing the orders with their company and Roger City, we obtained copies of those ordinances and our city attorney Matt Frost. Drafted one that's before you figure here to continue consideration. Uh, since all these city streets are involved in this request, only one ordinance is needed. We don't have to get any approval from the state or county with regards to this. Uh, with regards to the process, the high wire, the proposed high wire border ordinance was presented to the city commission at its May ninth, twenty twenty three meeting. Uh, for the first reading. At that time, the initial draft ordinance was revised to increase the clearance. Uh, that was proposed in the ordinance from twenty eight to thirty five feet. That change is found at the end of section fifty four. Uh, eighty two subsection two. As required by the uh Wayne City Charter, ordinance amendments cannot be adopted until at least one month after a meeting that was introduced. We're now slightly more than two months past the first reading. Notices regarding today's ordinance, uh, consideration will be able to properties abiding the proposed order. And our yellow uh public information sign to the place along the border as well, that may. Be bringing to people's attentions. At the city commission meeting, based on the information received, the city commission can adopt the ordinance, make minor amendments to it, postpone the matter, or deny it. Recommendation from myself is that subject to any information that we receive tonight. That the commission approved the uh proposed ordinance amendments to chapter fifty four of the Wayne City Corru Ordnances. Uh, to enact article four, section fifty four, eighty two, subsections one through five and create the requested high wire uh for. Uh, Mr. Van Dam is uh back with us uh today. And I think that to answer any questions, I'd commission my hand on that and I'll bring up the round for this. Screens.
Ben, were you interested in pressing the commission?
Uh, to say thanks. Again, I appreciate everybody's uh continued engagement of us. And I've shared everything in regards to the actual corridor and everything was previously. Happy that you talked to me.
Which we do. We don't imagine that we live there. I did this, I was sort of.
Mike, one question I had is have you received a little comment from the letters or?
No, I have not received any. I would ask that you work with her if you'd received any either.
We've got a false email sign or letter that we found out after explaining it to them.
I received one of the residents that lived on the road that about the terminology was tied to draft and ordinance. I walked through the material with the individual. He had no concerns.
Okay, if you'd like to address, we should just say your name. Just will be keep calm down so I can.
Okay. Um, well, my name is Sean McLeod and my husband and I both live at eighty eight East Division. My husband's name is Sean as well. Um. We just received the letter July third or actually by the like that to the fourth when I got it. So I've only seen one letter or one yellow. Sign was on a division or fourth of the lot building as on a division. So this kind of came to surprise to us. Um. We just really don't know what it entails. I don't, I guess what we're more concerned about is that we live there, pay our taxes, and we get our house right on division. Uh, we have a big large tree that kind of defines our property and we've been there for twenty four years. We've had some bad experiences with consumers and other companies tearing up our yard. I mean intercepted, tearing down, cleaning trees down. Um, I'm not prepared to to have that happen again. We don't want to deal with that again. So I guess our questions right now are just, we don't understand what this entails for us, you know, since we live there. That's our questions. So they are.
Great. Ben, would you like?
I'm happy to, yeah.
That is a hell.
Uh, yeah. So, so the the purpose of I require for currently, as you guys see us going through from spring and fall. Uh, we have to have people riding on the top of boats right now, looking for clients as we're going through. So, um, we are not planning on, um. Doing more, more traffic suspended than warships. We're hoping actually one of the leaders blast trips. We're trying towards taller ones, obstructing a pair of these wires. So, uh. So currently the the effort is simply to protect what we are already. So right now you may have seen that some of the uh charter communication lines have gone underground. Uh, that was supposed to be chartered to charter the A T T to bore underground. So that we can have providers, we're not having these lines, which again, most just keep getting taller. I get nervous every time.
They know, yeah, I see it.
So the, uh, so far, I think at this point, all the charter and A T T stuff is finished. Uh, it's just gotta get right out of that area. Further down the vision, you'd see that right. Uh, they have the most fires, I think the first one is the curious house there is the first crossing there. Uh, eventually what we might also do is uh is the power lines. Uh, we're gonna have some challenges with that, uh, but again, it will be a similar situation and it won't necessarily globally affect you because we're only looking at costs. So our looking at something that's size is just the areas we have in the margins. So, um. That's, that's our effort currently and again, not trying to do more volume of truth necessarily. It's more to. Okay, you guys have seen this.
Yeah, it's certain of that. Like I get that. We see you guys and I'm always like. I purchased more, you know, we've just put so much into our property. We we've just been put up so much and so many other things have nothing to do with you. But we just don't want to lose our tree. We don't want to lose our property. We don't want that fort back up again. Um, so that was really more to be concerned than track.
Yeah.
But I get that you want, you know, that's that's when we saw this, it just kind of gave us red flags of like. A whole road being tore up or treating kind of down. That was a concern.
It's really to get our people off the off the top of those ones. Uh, less congestion and safer, safer than. And. And then the your request for the ordinance to protect your investments that stayed that way forever rather than you making this investment. And then having it unknown, which is essentially what has happened. Uh, we're doing it again.
Thank you. That was.
When you're concerned.
Yeah.
All right, anyone else in the audience? Okay, commissioners, we can move it.
No, I was just gonna say, cause there isn't a cross anyway, Lewis or where it all chunks from the letter, sir.
Oh, uh, I think. Uh, I believe the first street, uh, the materials for the process. I think that's the one crossing one, um. Who's who's that? Uh, we've flown across and do us and then there's maybe.
Morgan, you have a question?
No, I mean, I, George, and and randomly, uh, I've seen some boring already through there. Some, there are people are already all.
Why did this? Beforehand?
Uh, no, we're paid, you can call that. And so that's separate from assortments. A charter, the A T T are done, bring, I think, I've hooked everything up. I have that little, I think they'll say I do it quite a lot of different. Uh, the the lines are dead as well, so. But that's, that's what we're doing on the bowling, we're paying. But that's, that's what we're doing, uh, only we're paying work, and again, it's here, you know, showing the assortments. That how this is your tech that works, you know, with the organs, but.
Good, support. And also, or, I, I, many questions that I've asked with Ben and brought in conversations. So, Ben, the, Austin, with the, uh, is, is it, uh, insurance that you're gonna be dealing with?
Eventually, the power, yeah. And that's something where you were hoping to possibly get grants in Manhattan City, be the receiver, uh, yeah. Uh, in, in the order of urgency, uh, communication lines, of course, for all of us, for dealing with that just off pocket, for example, getting themselves. But yeah, when, when we get to the power lines, they can look back for us to ask if there would be willingness to help us supply or raise, because, uh, the amount that is waiting for them.
And what is it by my, uh?
Uh, I, uh, I would say broadly, thirty-five years, uh, we're a little based on, uh, American, we're open ahead. Two, two to five years to admit, well, it's a big, you know, it's nothing like, it's not gonna be next year. Can't actually be here after that, three years.
And that's the, well, we're raising that, those lines.
It'll be a combination of boring, it's flush underground, it's the hospital again, and then there's kind of a critical juncture where it becomes so expensive to bring things underground, that's not worth it, you're gonna pull over. So probably the, the nation, the easy start going around, and then the, uh, more than one stop, we're just adding base. And it does, I did get an updated, we have updated cost, and it sounds like a big five, more than like a four, five crossings that will still need to be above ground crossings and, and estimate solos in the two or three year range, some water.
I, I, I support, um, the request, there's people that, um, will be discussing, I need to get a motion to approve. Okay, all I was gonna say, you know, Sean, Sean, I'm done with their diagrams.
Oh, yeah. We would just, yeah, this was all kind of about like, seriously yesterday, like, got one in the mail, came down, got a segmentation, I would have called to person, I just, we just have had so many other things happen because of where we live, and we have these, with the county, they take advantage of that, which is kind of making a lot of stuff. When I looked at that, I thought, oh my gosh, if we go, we're gonna have our whole, our tree gonna get cut down. You know, we just want to make sure that the integrity of our property is respected, and we're not gonna have to go through all that. Kind of stuff, we have to, we're gonna be, where that's, that's.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed amendment to Chapter fifty-four of the Point City Corridor Ordinances to enact Article six, section fifty-four, eighty-two, one, five, and create the requested high-wire corridor.
You said? Okay. Um, it, it was article four, four, I didn't, yeah, right. So we are, or, you can just make an exception. Uh, and we have a second, George, George, any further discussion? Roll call, please, Jessica.
Me, Hammer.
Hi.
Lassiter.
Hi.
Nencha.
Hi.
Kaffen.
Fine.
Rudy.
Hi.
Well, she here.
Okay, thank you, Christopher. Good one. Okay, moving on to new business, we have, um, item A, traffic control order one thirty-eight, Taylor Street, fifteen mile an hour speed limit. Consider the recommendation from City Manager Michael Kane to confirm traffic control order one thirty-eight, establishment of fifteen mile an hour speed limit on Taylor Street as. Mike?
Uh, last fall, we put up, uh, fifteen mile an hour speed limit sign on Taylor Street. And we usually run the temporary traffic control orders for ninety days. Uh, certainly there after it snowed, and we don't follow, uh, that portion of Taylor Street that goes through, uh, Rowley Park. Uh, during the winter months, we decided to hold it over until the spring, so people could, you know, who sent for it, and they had any concerns on it, they would let us know. Uh, so this has gone more from the ninety days that, uh, uh, standard traffic, temporary traffic controllers go. It now comes before the city commission, uh, for you to determine whether you want to make it permanent or not, or extend the temporary driver controller for another period of time, or just, uh, remove this speed limit signs out of there. The portion, this is at the park, a west side, right, the park, uh, road actually goes through the center of what's basically the, the large parking area that went from the, um, north and south sections of that, uh, that part of the park, so. Uh, we've not received any complaints regarding the fifteen mile an hour speed limit that I'm aware of. And the reason it's a fifteen mile an hour speed limit is because it isn't going to the park, and it's a lot of, uh, that has been graphic that goes through that air stretch. So, I'm, I'm, the city commission confirming.
Kevin, uh, do, it doesn't seem to be working from your point of view?
I have not spent much time up there to check on that, um, we're starting to get on the busy kind of parks, which I guess everyone can.
It does seem like a fifteen mile an hour speed limit to a person, good idea.
It is, that came about, um, a little gentleman, if you, I do not remember his name, I had, uh, sticky on my desk forever, anyway. Um, it lives right there, I believe, right on the corner, called and talked to me about it, and seeing cars right through there. What was then illegal speed of twenty-five, it's just too fast, I'm afraid there's gonna be one there.
Uh, any, thank you, Kevin. Any comments or questions to the public?
Have, have, have any complaints, I guess, from, you know, if you were soccer moms, but, you know, families, moms, dads, with kids in the park about people speeding through their dad's scrap, and you're, we're complaints on. Do you? Okay. Now that I've known with soccer, I don't spend as much time up there, you'd see people go through there, it's twenty-five, it's too fast.
Was there anything else to add?
Okay.
Yeah, I, I spent a lot of time up there, there's, it's just hectic. When that parking lot's full, on both sides of the playing fields, softball, soccer, youth soccer, youth softball. It's crazy how busy that is, and it's gravel. As stated, it's, it's, uh, not pounding winners, it's closed off, but it is a state busy, busy, busy roads. For a short intensive period of time, coming and going, or, 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 for your guys. So it makes total sense. Um, I think those right there as, four, five years ago in the past request that we pave that. It wouldn't make any sense to pave it from that little stretch to go into the gravel parking lot, but some point, you know, that could all be paved, that, that's not the issue, the issue is slowing it down makes total sense. And there are two or three homes right there, so that makes sense. And heavy heavy use for short intensive period of time. So, I'm in full support.
I'm in full support of any fifty mile an hour grid card is. Um, what is your game? Uh, just to make a, this will be a permanent, not extending the number, correct?
Correct.
Martin?
Um, I mean, I, 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 I talked to you today about it, and, and I, I think that, and here's my issue. I, I think it's Pandora's box from Canada, is that, okay, so now, now we've done this. So how long before, you know, we have to, we have to have a meeting and put signs up behind the ideal area for those, you know, I don't know what that was, over by the other two fields, re, and, and it's a legacy. Um, and then, uh, and then we'll have to have one for Avenged, and then we're gonna have to have one for the Big Loop down here at Veterans Park. Uh, I, I, I did state it to Kevin, I go, at one, at what point in time do we stop, dummy down society and just go, look? You know, uh, as a common sense, and I realized that if common sense was common, then we would be. Uh, I, I, I just think it's, I, I think it really opens up the can of earth. I guess if we're gonna do this, I understand to your point, Mike, that, you know, we, we had a temporary one there. I, I, I spent a lot of time up there, Tom's right, it's more congested, and, and you couldn't speed through there. The times that I'm down there with soccer and everything like that, and you, uh, you, you're, you're more of what, more or less playing, you know, uh, Dodge, Dodge cars than, than speeding, uh, so I guess what I would like to see is, at, at bare minimum, you park your brand new trailer up there and, and clock that for a while, and then the other easy answer to it, which would solve everything, is, you know, sounds like we might have some extra telephone poles later on, so, you know, uh, we go to a high wire, and you lay those right in the middle and go, all right. You come in from one side, you leave on that side, come in from the other side, you leave on that side. And I think that can solve a, a lot of, a lot of issue without any more stuff for your officers to worry about going, okay, you know, we gotta, we now we gotta watch park for speeders and stuff. I, I just think that, you know, we just always going here, and, and even talking to Kevin, you know, I mean, the reason we got the speed trailer was because of the people that say, oh, they're flying by my house, and then the speed trailer shows them. Now, they're really doing twenty-five, but when you're sitting there sipping your cocktail going, man, you know what, I'm watching them, and they're flying by me. Well, at that point, that looks like they're, like, but, yeah, you know, they're, they're really just doing the, the speed with it. So I would rather look to find other avenues than to go with adding another level of, you know, for, for our officers to have to look at, and, um, you, you know, for this Canada learns and Pandora's box, just to be opened up, and go, okay, well, now we're here. Here, 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 so that's, that's my, my recommendation, and I'll make it right now, is I, I, I would look to table this, and at least, if nothing else, set the speed trailer up there and, and, and check it, we got, you know, we got false sports coming up. We'll leave this up there again, um, and, uh, and, and see, see what that would, um, do, and, or like I say, just split apart, and you can't get through. So that's real simple. Yeah, on one side, yeah.
Okay. If you. No, sir. Will, do you want me to make my motion? Well, I, I support the recommendations presented for keeping it, uh, uh, making it permanent fifteen, and you raised good questions, and we can take the fifteen mile an hour sign down, and, uh, we're gonna, along the range improvement plan for that whole parking area. Maybe close it up and whatever, but I think it's the simplest thing to do now. Just have a little fifteen mile an hour, is that what you would do, Kevin, is put fifteen mile an hours to that?
Yeah, there, there, the signs are not up, it's all. So, and all the regional lives, they, they've been there, and, and I don't understand the, 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 the need, if it's, if it, if it's not being, if it's not being attended to, then, you know, then let the lanes come in, if, if, you know, if, if it is. I, I, I mean, you, you got, you got bigger issues down here, uh, on the loop here, and, and in, in Veterans Park, but.
And.
Yeah, how was your order created last June? Well, why was the order created last June? Was there an issue with speeding? Was it brought to the commission?
Just, all, that conversation with you about it, okay.
And then, like Mike said, in the game ball, then we closed off in winter time, right, there was no reason for it to happen. Okay, was that the first, first time you're assuming that, that complaint last year?
I don't think it was the first time you've heard that, I mean, the conversation, but, uh, all right.
Okay, well, um, does anyone make, want to make a motion to support the recommendation?
Oh, I can, I can. Oh, my, motion to, uh, approve the consideration, or the recommendation, motion to approve the recommendation, City Manager to confirm control, traffic control order one thirty-eight, establishing fifteen mile per hour speed limit on Taylor Street as presented.
All right, is there a second? I'll second it. So we can have a discussion, can you?
Yeah, okay. How would this change your, would this impact you differently, Kevin? Would it be a strain and increase your progress?
No, the only things to do would be reinforce things a little bit better, because as it is right now, if you drive it like five through there, it is way too fast, I'm trying to, uh, it's like the two gentlemen that were down here before. When you're presented with something that isn't right, and you can't do anything about it, in my world, that's wrong. Um, this would be able to address the speeding issue in there, people are driving through there twenty, twenty-five mile an hour, we have legal reasons, stop, I'm telling them. It's a fifteen, they'll do this, you guys have some options to take there.
So you feel it would be appropriate being posted at fifteen or twenty-five?
Fifteen.
Kevin, hey.
Any, any other, kind of, just, just one thing, just, my, I'm a D C O, other agenda that you did is this and six days of twenty-three, is that, that is the, should have been twenty-two, twenty-two, yeah, sorry, I figured, yeah.
I'm just, just to say, meaning what Kevin's saying is that this gives you a tool to enforce costs. Right, are you using the common sense? I think this gives you a tool, it's not going to give you an extra burden of man-hours to sit there and force, uh, if someone has to wrap us. It gives you that tool, right, that's, okay, yeah, thank you. If someone is ready, we'll stay at it.
Okay, is there any other discussion? So we have the motion to make the fifteen mile speed limit permanent, and we're, we're, what was the name of the street, it's, or Taylor Street? So Jessica, roll call, please.
Lassiter.
Hi.
Nencha.
Hi.
Kaffen.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hey.
Me, Hammer.
Hi.
Motion, Gary.
Thank you. All right, moving on, we have good in the, or, commissioners, is there anything that you're gonna do?
Two seats. Um, great for us, Kevin, and, uh, Fourth of July parade, uh, we got all my kilowatts. Uh, your guys were up and down the street around the place. This was a great thing to see, uh, if I was not from here, and I was thinking of buying a place here, or I was a visitor, I would have been impressed at the police presence, and especially Yoncle, uh, was super friendly, interacting, engaging with kids, and stopping talking to people, and smiling and friendly, uh, just really impressed by that, Kevin. Thank you, yeah, and second issue, the bubble ordinance that we kind of kicked around here, right, last minute, I, I think I'd like to see that moving forward for the, uh, we're gonna be, we're gonna rise in the winter time, everybody. Be nice to have that in place before we start, yeah, for sure, they have a nice.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, yeah. Anyone else? Ken?
Yeah, I would just like to express my congratulations to everyone from the city, um, for the Fourth of July weekend, and the Point Thunder weekend. DPW guys, I've seen them run around early mornings, late at night, finding early mornings, grabbing trash, um, yeah, I came to the city hall or something, and we have something like a Friday vacuum, it was very attentive to helping someone with, um, reserving or giving the patio, giving keys for padding on that. So kudos to DPW and all the other staff members of Point City. Um, second thing, Point Thunder was a great, I spent some time in the event of water, shore, parks. There wasn't one certain issue, um, that I was witness to in regards to traffic flow or boat launch. Um, so I'd like to address those concerns and issues with the appropriate point of contact, whether that be the Point Thunder Committee, the Main Street Committee, um. And then third, last, uh, residue commissioners have received an email from City Manager Mike in regards to the trouble with our leadership, um, if you support that, um, I would be grateful, if you don't support it, um, then obviously I would pursue it, um. Just talking my piece about it, I feel there would be more, I try as a commissioner to try and stay involved in different things and scenarios, that's why I always elected to go down the Michigan Municipal League to try and learn and adapt myself in that aspect. Um, that's why I participated within, you know, the community exchange process, to learn, um, from the other community there. This would be the one, this, I think, I would benefit the most out of all other things that I've been involved with as a city commissioner. Um, so that's why I have an interest in attending. Um, but it's too much of an ask, and obviously I'm not gonna contest it, um, I would just obviously walk away from it, leave that on the board, um, but.
When's the deadline?
The deadline was June thirtieth, the application was put in, they are doing me a favor of holding that application, their board committee is holding that. Um, for the conversation.
Their board and community is holding that um for the conversations to continue and stay here.
Um first of all, I totally agree with a lot of who got to be said, George, well said. Then fellow commissioners, get my response to him. Okay, so I'm in full support and bring it over there. Who needs to do to to want to expand your opportunities of leadership and that's it. That's all. All right, well. Under announcements, uh the next reason for city commission meeting is scheduled for July fifth and twelve P M. Motion or set a motion to adjourn the meeting. Although, is anyone say aye?
Aye, aye, as opposed.